On Tuesday, October seventeenth, the body of a twenty-four-year-old trans woman was found dead in a city shelter facility. The LAPD failed to do this investigation. How are you going to give and justify giving half of the budget for every time that a trans woman of color dies? Neither one of you cares, neither none of the LAPD officers care, and you're going to keep bringing biggest trans movement and racist to run this failed department? The most resource department, the most failed department? And every single time, a trans woman of color fucking dies in this city, none of you fucking cares? And the LAPD said it was accidental, and they refused to do an investigation, and there's individuals there, and they refuse, they need a week to clean it up. Fuck this, uh, fuck McDonald.
As a recent immigrant twenty years ago, I was convicted of a felony that made me deportable. I was not deported because I got a second chance after I served my jail time. I got to go home and reunite with my family. Also got to be the first of my family to go to college, and then I came to LA for law school and became an immigrant rights lawyer with the ACLU. I was sworn in in December twenty sixteen, a month after Trump's election. In the next four years, from the Muslim ban to family separation, it was one of the most devastating periods for immigrants in US history. And now with Project Twenty Twenty Five, it's about to get a whole lot worse. And so council members, I urge you to do your due diligence, not just rubber stamp Mayor Bass. You must seriously consider McDonald's record, abuse, and local collusion with ICE. If I had been in the LA County Jail under Sheriff McDonald, I would have been transferred twice to languish in immigration prison to fight my deportation case. Thousands of families were separated under Sheriff McDonald, not at the border, but right here in LA. Finally, City Council strongly demands that you immediately adopt a sanctuary ordinance that maximizes our city's protections for immigrant Angelinos and personally urge you in Novo.
Why is this room raucous? Why is this room so volatile today? Because Sheriff McDonald should not be the next sheriff of Los Angeles. He's been, the sheriff has been sued numerous times. You're worried about liability and a budget deficit? And here's my other concern. He opposed sanctuary ordinance for California. He stationed ICE officers in the jail. He says that makes us safer. Well, he's going to make us less safe if he is the next sheriff. We need a sanctuary ordinance. I hope the city council has the guts to pass such an ordinance, and we need protect, temporary protected status for Central American immigrants and workers. Let's make that happen too. Show some courage. Thank you.
I'm here today to be a voice and advocate for the thousands of Angelino families that have deeply rooted fears and concerns under the leadership of Jim McDonald. These families are in deep concern and fear for their future under his leadership. He has a history of colluding with ICE, and we demand advocacy and support for these families. We are also here today to bring awareness of the tragic death of a transgender immigrant woman by the name of Emily Garcia. She was a role model, a leader, and advocate for our community, and we demand answers and demand that the LAPD help us find her killer. Thank you.
Now is the time for the city of Los Angeles to reassert its leadership on immigration rights and to defy the anti-immigrant bigotry that will be ruling in the White House. If you fail to do so, we will hold this body accountable. Jim McDonald transferred thousands of Angelinos in his custody to ICE. Because of him, families are separated right here in Los Angeles. He also opposed efforts to make California a sanctuary state, opposing many of the values all of you claim to have got, have governed from. If you approve the nomination and fail to pass a sanctuary ordinance, history will judge you as it has Jim McDonald. A historic collaborator of a ruthless deportation machine. We demand no collaboration with ICE. We demand you to pass a sanctuary ordinance now and make no mistake, we will hold this body accountable and if necessary, the mayor of Los Angeles. I urge you to oppose the nomination and to enshrine immigrant protections into law. So no matter who is the police chief, our city is committed to protecting immigrants. Thank you.
And I'm here to speak against the appointment of McDonald for chief of police in the city of LA. I grew up, I'm the vice president of an immigrant union. I grew up in San Diego in the border region. I saw the raids and experienced the raids of the eighties. I saw my parents be torn apart. I experienced the raids of two thousand and one. This president has said he's coming after our folks. There will be raids. There will be coming to churches outside of workplaces, transportation, apartments, you name it. You're appointing somebody who our community has no faith in. I've had chief of police in San Diego beg us to speak to our members because no one was reporting crime in immigrant communities. We are going to be a community under siege. And McDonald is, has vowed to turn us in in the past, and he's doing that again. We need to stand up for immigrant communities because the boots will come for our folks and we will remember.
Didn't we get rid of McDonald? I thought we voted him out. So this is a disgrace, and it's really a spit in our face, in our faces as the people of Los Angeles spoke before, and now we're bringing back the same folks we voted out. Y'all said to us when De Leong did his dirt, y'all said, well, we have to wait to vote him out because there's nothing we can do. But then when we vote people out, you guys still bring them back. Not only that, you want to pay this man five hundred thousand dollars a year? And we're in a budget deficit? Five hundred thousand dollars a year? And in the first quarter of the year, you almost a hundred million dollars in liabilities? I hear people keep talking about property, but what about our bodies that's been dealing with police brutality for over fifty years? I don't care how long you worked in the LAPD. Feel that.
Speaker, please remind us of the name you signed up under, and you'll have one minute for the item.
My name is Fuck Jim McDonald. Police Commission has failed us by putting forward the name of Jim McDonald. Karen Bass failed us by choosing him. The Public Safety Committee, with the exception of Hugo Soto Martinez, as a committee, voted for him and failed us, advancing him now here. Now is the time to change course. You all have not only an opportunity, but a responsibility to reject his appointment. McDonald is dangerous to black folks, immigrants, and the city of Los Angeles. This is not a characteristic exclusive to him. It is the essence of LAPD. Fuck Jim McDonald. Fuck LAPD. Fuck the police. Reject his appointment.
I was worried about this guy, given the way he bent over backwards for ALADS. I was worried about this narrative that Chief Moore wasn't supportive enough for cops when he's the guy who said that protesters have George Floyd's blood on their hands too. Last week's committee meeting was something else. He was asked about LAPD eyeballing explosives and blowing up a neighborhood, and his response was, quote, "That's something that was done in a matter that certainly could have been done different with a very different outcome. Things weren't done as thoroughly as they might have been." This was the greatest fuck-up in the last four years, and you can't say they should have done things differently? Bob, Mr. Budget Guy, does it not make you worried about legal liability? He was smearing immigrants as predators, defending pretextual stops. Jim, have you ever been stopped by an LAPD officer for no fucking reason and asked if you're on probation or parole? I highly doubt it. And there's one goddamn reason. Has something to do with the color of your skin and how cops perceive you.
While Chief McDonald's appointment is significant, concerns remain that it doesn't reflect the diversity of South LA, especially given the challenges our Latino immigrant and black communities face. With the threat of mass deportations under the new administration, these concerns are heightened, given the chief's past involvement of working systematically with federal immigration services. Our community's fear isn't assuaged by a chief who merely looks at us, but by one who listens, understands our struggles, and responds with empathy.
So first and foremost, fuck James Pig McDonald. He's supposed to be a relic of the past, not a neoteric symbol of the future. Since the election just passed, I want to remind this council, just like Pastor Hugh did, that this pig was rejected by the voters in the city and county of LA when he ran for sheriff in twenty eighteen. That included black, brown, and poor people who rejected him. Coincidentally, the only demographic he did well with was rich white people. Now Karen Bass said that McDonald's nomination will deepen relationships with communities across the city, but it's clear that McDonald will deepen relationships with white supremacy in LA. He will deepen relationships with his buddy Donald Trump to terrorize, prey, and criminalize Angelinos. McDonald said a few weeks back, "I work for the Police Commission, the mayor, and with the council, and we work as partners in public safety." You notice that he says he doesn't work for the people. You see, we serve the people, and the people are here to say that we reject Jim McDonald. At a time when arrests and Skid Row are skyrocketing under racist KDO, you want to bring in Bill Bratton's buddy in arms to give carte blanche to him to bring back broken windows policing in black and brown communities? To the council members pontificating about the horrors of Trump, the presentification of what Trump represents is right here. This is Trump. This is Trump.
Thank you, Speaker. Your time is up.
I'm deeply concerned about the potential appointment of Jim McDonald as Los Angeles' next chief, police chief. His record immigration is deeply troubling, especially his past collaboration with ICE to deport, to deport Angelinos. While Mr. McDonald claims he will follow the law, his past actions suggested otherwise. The Constitution and the US Supreme Court have made it clear that certain responsibilities are only in the hands of federal government. Beyond the reach of the city or local laws, Los Angeles cannot afford a police chief who de, deeps and divides between law enforcement and our most vulnerable communities. For the sake of the city's safety and unity, vote on appointment of McDonald. LA deserves a police chief who will prioritize the safety and trust of Los Angelinos, not just select a few. As some of those who believe our city should be sanctuary for all, our city must lead by example and protect every resident regardless of their immigration status. We urge a major to select a leader who will con unite our communities, ensure safety of all, and rebuild trust, especially with us more vulnerable residents. Let us don't forget that the city was built by immigrants.
The currently selected candidate to be LAPD's newest police chief, Jim McDonald, has had a history of colluding with ICE, and in the process, has played a significant role in tearing apart thousands of Angelino families every year. The Transatina Coalition seeks to not only hold him accountable, but to ensure the future safety of Los Angeles immigrant families. It is imperative to put in place a sanctuary ordinance to ensure that the people that make up a large majority of the city and contribute to its future are not traumatized by those in power with their own hateful, ununifying agendas. We are also here to bring attention to the city council that an immigrant trans woman named Emily Garcia was found deceased in front of a city-funded shelter at twelve fifteen Lodi Place last month. Emily was a former employee and dear friend of the Transatina Coalition, and many of her friends are here today to advocate for the justice she so rightly deserves, in investigating her death and LAPD being in intentional contact with Transatina Coalition members, and more importantly, the family of the late Emily Garcia. Thank you.
Jim McDonald fits a form. P-I-G-G-Y. Anti-blackness keeps y'all warm. P-I-G-G-Y. With some shame on you, and some shame on you. Here's some shame, there's some shame, every vote should feel shame. Anti-blackness keeps y'all warm with a P-I-G-G-Y. Safer cities, what a shame. P-I-G-G-Y. Now your mayor's trying to clean his name. P-I-G-G-Y. With some shame on Bass from the working class. Here's some shame, there's some shame, every vote should feel shame. A vote for Jim, and you're all to blame. P-I-G-G-Y. As someone from Massachusetts, you should, I'm ashamed that you're from Massachusetts.
Um, como dije, soy Maru y soy organizadora de Chirla en el Valle de San Fernando. Y yo, y estoy aquí para pedir que la persona que esté a cargo de la seguridad de Los Ángeles, que es una gran ciudad, sea una persona íntegra y le dé seguridad y protección a nuestra comunidad inmigrante.
One moment, Speaker.
Yes, hello. I am representing the community organization Chirla from the San Fernando Valley, and I am asking the people who are in charge that they appoint someone who is in charge of the security of LA, being that LA is a grand city, be a person who is adequate for the job.
Um, como dije, la comunidad inmigrante ahorita va a ser un punto, un target para ser discriminados, y esta es una comunidad vulnerable.
As I said, the immigrant community here is going to be a target, and they are very vulnerable to face discrimination.
Pedimos que la policía no trabaje con migración, con ICE, y que la Ciudad de Los Ángeles sea una ciudad santuario.
And we ask that the police of Los Angeles not be working with ICE, and we ask that Los Angeles be a sanctuary city.
En donde la gente, la comunidad que confía en la policía y en la seguridad pueda vivir en paz y feliz.
Where the people who trust in the security and the police can live in peace and with security.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Given this proposed LAPD leadership change and the devastating election results, now more than ever, we must enshrine a sanctuary law to protect our communities. The only codified protection is the statewide SB fifty-four, which although crucial, has gaps that allow for local taxpayer money and resources to be used for immigration law enforcement. Research from our students and at the center show that these gaps include allowing local officers to enforce federal immigration reentry laws in certain circumstances and give ICE access to Angelino personal data through data mining. We simply cannot entrust the safety of our immigrant neighbors and family members to policies that do not carry the full force of the law. In fact, at last Tuesday's Public Safety Committee meeting, McDonald did not firmly commit to keeping LAPD Special Order Forty's protections, deflecting the question by pointing to SB fifty-four and citing that that Special Order Forty dates back to the nineteen sixties. As we have learned at the national level, we cannot count on immigrants' rights to be protected by policies that have...
And I am, first and foremost, the son of an immigrant. I am here with Homies Unidos, and I'm representing our communities, right? Our very community, our very backyard, this particular zip code. So I'm here as a community member, your community member, to reiterate already what's been said, that we are a sanctuary city, to stop LAPD collaboration with ICE and go after our community. To respect Special Order Forty, that LAPD should not ask anyone for their legal status. I was just marching these streets decades ago, Proposition one eighty-seven, right? We've been here before. We cannot lose the trust of community with the LAPD. Right? Trust is everything, right? Everything is on the line. And lastly, our Salvadorian community are facing a dictatorship in El Salvador and have arrested over thirty thousand people of innocent and not in any association with the gang.
I just want to make a quick reminder to people, the crime rate has gone down in the last two years in this city, down. So it's just history. We are, DSA is part of a coalition of more than eighty organizations that have strong concerns about Jim McDonald's history. We want to make a real sanctuary city out of Los Angeles, as was done in twenty twenty. DSA strongly condemns the nomination of former Sheriff McDonald to the chief of LAPD and urges the withdrawal of the nomination. When he was county sheriff from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, McDonald actively colluded with ICE, Trump's ICE. We got Trump back, now we're going to get McDonald back? I don't think so. Going out of his way to use county funding to transfer county residents and databases to ICE. He rejected policy efforts to protect California residents.
But yeah, you know, in twenty eighteen, I voted against McDonald because he's racist, he's anti-immigrant. He failed to get rid of the deputy gangs inside the sheriff's station, a problem we're still facing here in our community. I'm part of Centro CISO, one of the coaches for the Police Accountability Campaign, and in our neighborhood, we see this constantly where it's pretextual stops, people pulled out of their cars for running the stop sign, searched, no, no, no warrants, no parole, no probation, nothing. They're taking out their car and unjustly searched, violating their rights, and that's something we see every day, that's something we experience every day in our community, and we're here to fight against that. And I want to let you know, I want y'all to vote against that, to vote against appointing him. You know, he's anti-immigrant, that's not something our city should be representing. And I just want to make it clear that we're going to continue to fight and organize whether he's a chief or not, because we stand with our community and we stand with the working class people of our neighborhood, and that's where we're at.
Please remind us of the name you signed up under, and you'll have one minute for the item.
Yeah, Fuck McDonald. I'm with the Black Alliance for Just Immigration. I'm here to demand McDonald be blocked from appointment and that council implement a strong sanctuary ordinance to protect our immigrant population. McDonald was part of Bratton's LAPD, which particularly was murderous and harmful to black folks in LA. He then took his archaic and anti-black mindset and policies to lead LASD, which the people fired him from, so why are we here today? McDonald's collaboration with ICE as sheriff disproportionately separated and exiled black immigrants from our families and our communities. Over seventy-five percent of black people deported at that time were deported because of contact with police, including LASD and LAPD. This is a black issue too. This is a racial justice issue. Not only do we need a sanctuary ordinance that disrupts the anti-black police-to-deportation pipeline in the city of Los Angeles, but we need for people like McDonald to be blocked from appointment in offices known to be as harmful as LAPD. He's a danger to black people, a danger to immigrants, and a danger to all Angelinos. Bye, McDonald.
Buenas tardes. Yo me llamo Maria Estrada, y soy miembro de...
One moment.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Maria Estrada. I'm a member of US WW.
Residente del centro de Los Angeles.
I'm a resident from central Los Angeles.
La policía debe de servir al pueblo entero, sobre todo proteger a la población vulnerable.
And the police should serve the whole community, and specifically, they should protect the vulnerable community.
Y a una, y a una janitor víctima de violencia sexual o otro delito...
And having been a janitor of sexual violence...
Y lo cual también uno no se acerca a la policía.
And someone who does not want to get too close or comfortable with the police.
Porque piensa que nos van a entregar a migración.
Because I believe that they will turn us into immigration.
Y ahorita con esta nominación, más en peligro estamos.
And now, due to this nomination, we are even more in danger.
Porque yo recuerdo cuando compañeros fueron víctimas de un delito, esta persona estuvo como jefe del chery, y estuvieron en riesgo, y algunos fueron deportados por inmigración.
Because I remember when some of my coworkers were victims of crimes, and this new nominee, who was sheriff at the time, was in office, some of these coworkers were deported.
Miles de trabajadores ahorita tenemos miedo de que este señor llegue a tomar posición, por eso les estamos pidiendo que voten no. Estas son las caras de la comunidad, estas son las caras que trabajamos, y no venimos a pedir, a quitarle el trabajo a nadie. Por favor, voten no.
And thousands of us members here in this community are scared for this man to take office, and here we are, the faces representing the community. We are the faces of the community, and we are asking you guys to vote no, please.
Appointing McDonald as the chief of police is a regressive act on the city of Los Angeles. It is not a progressive move. You all have the ability to actually do something progressive and stop him from being appointed. I know most of you don't like to do progressive things and like to push forth progressive policies, but actually do something that's going to save your political careers in the future, because a time is coming where nobody who preaches progressive values but doesn't actually push progressive policies will have a seat at this council.
We already know what Los Angeles thinks about Sheriff, of Sheriff McDonald. He was the first sheriff in a hundred years to lose reelection. The people talking in here don't matter compared to the voice of Los Angeles. This is about democracy. Los Angeles has rejected this man because of his collusion with ICE and his decisions around immigrant rights. So it comes to, this is almost kind of insulting. It is your job to choose someone who actually is qualified and who Angelinos can trust. There has to be someone else in LAPD, a giant department, who is qualified rather than someone that Angelinos have already rejected. So I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Maybe you should take some time and consider this, put this back on desk, because you see how much backlash you have from the public community. Because Mayor Bass decided to appoint instead of consult with you to see why he was kicked off, or if she did her work, why do you have so many people against his appointment? He should consider he shouldn't want to be in that position because of that same backlash. It's supposed to be the bridge from the people to the, to the police. Officer Podesta's cancer is at seven seven. Your first job is to look at his disrespect and arrest of a senior citizen with no arrestable offense on December eighth of two thousand twenty-two. New chief, Officer Podesta at seven seven. God bless everyone. I don't know what you're going to do. You guys usually do what the mayor says, but who are we going to speak up?
Uh, we can't afford this guy. We're in a budget crisis, and he cost half a million dollars. If he cared about optics, he'd, he wouldn't even accept that much money. And, and I, I don't want Mayor Karen Bass not to get reelected if, you know, this, this is not, this is not something people are happy about. She's not listening. She needs to listen to the people, city council needs to listen to the people, and you need to look at the budget. We can't afford this guy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie. I'm a daughter of immigrants. I do not support the appointment of James P. McDonald. To those that are calling for trust, peace, safety, and calm, I ask who will McDonald's approach give trust, safety, peace, and calm to? Which neighborhoods deserve peace? Certainly, clearly, certain neighborhoods have been terrorized by, by his approach. So look, like, catalytic converters have been stolen in my neighborhood, and to be clear, my family has been rubbed, robbed at gunpoint. But punishment, carceral mentality only hurts everyone, so please pass a sanctuary ordinance. And as a citizen concerned for the municipal budget, I do not support someone who will cause more expensive liability cases. Care and preventative solutions are the fiscally responsible approach. Thank you.
Yeah, so we have the nomination of Jim McDonald. Now, it's, no, you're doing this nomination just three days after we found out that we're going to have a fucking fascist as president next, for the next four years. So this, this guy works, so you all claim you want to fight back against Trump, but yet here you are, probably going to nominate someone who literally worked with Trump on, to help him with all this immigration crap. You know, you're, you're not, so this is your first test of, are you going to stand up to Trump or not? And if you vote to confirm this guy, we're going to find out that you're not going to protect us from Trump at all. You're just going to help Trump, you're going to let this guy, who's not even going to do anything to reform, there's no chance this guy could do anything to reform, or do anything to make things worse, that less, you know, they're so racist, so violent, he's not going to do anything to change that, we need abolition, and you know, this guy was elected out. Why are you now, he was elected out by the voters. Why are you confirming him?
Speaker, your time is up.
Why, why are you making...
And the message today is, should be really clear, we're asking the council members to make a decision to vote no on Jim McDonald's appointment. It's, it's wild, it's absurd, it's, it's hurtful, it's offensive, it's a slap in the face to immigrant communities across LA that this is, that you're doing it, you're doing this this week. This is incredible, and it's a slap in the face. And my question to all the city council members and Mayor Bass, if you think this little of the immigrant families in your own city, thank you.
I am very disturbed by the appointment of, I was going to call him Sheriff McDonald, but Jim McDonald as the LAPD chief, because the voters in LA County spoke very clearly to, to not reelect him because of his collaboration with ICE. CLU was part of the LA Welcomes Network to welcome migrants to the city when the state of Texas began busing them to here in the summer of twenty twenty-three. And one of our responsibilities was to invite faith leaders to be the first person to get on the bus when the migrants arrived and say, you are welcome here. And so I urge you, council members, not to make a liar of these faith leaders. We want to welcome immigrants into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bruno. I'm with the California Immigrant Policy Center. We are one of ninety organizations who've signed on to a letter urging to pass a sanctuary ordinance and expressing outrage at Jim McDonald's appointment. Ninety community, legal, faith, and union organizations who provide legal and direct services to tens of thousands of immigrant families, workers, students, and communities every year. We know that Jim McDonald will not keep immigrant families safe. While he was sheriff, he colluded with ICE to separate thousands of families and also worked with Trump. Last week, when Donald responded to questions by the Public Safety Committee, saying he will simply follow the law. Donald Trump will now be president, and he claims to be, that undocumented people is a crime. So this is racist, and it's clear McDonald will follow the law and aid Trump's mass deportation campaign. We strongly oppose McDonald's appointment due to his prior history, including with ICE. Reject pro-Trump McDonald. Trumpism has no place in Los Angeles, a city of immigrants.
My name is Pastor Kelvin Sauls. I'm the co-founder of the Black Alliance for Just Immigration, as well as with Clergy for Black Lives. I served Home United Methodist Church for six years in South Los Angeles. While I've had the opportunity to work with then Sheriff McDonald, the relationship was very, very fruitful. However, as our work continued, we realized that there continue to be inconsistencies around the integrity for enforcement. And so, given the time that we're going in and the challenges that we are going to be faced, consistency and integrity is going to be key to restore the culture in the Los Angeles Police Department. Unfortunately, given what has happened, especially the relationship with ICE, I have to stand here and just say that I have deep concerns and fears that that consistent, that inconsistency will continue. Safe... Safety in the end must center the humanity and the dignity of all, especially our immigrants who will be vulnerable now as a result of the...
Often fascism and public safety are used interchangeably. We need to think about that today, which is why we who represent thousands of day laborers in the city of Los Angeles oppose this appointment of Jim McDonald. Sanctuary is not an ordinance, it's actually a practice. And one way that the city council and this mayor can show that they actually care about immigrant communities and black communities is by rejecting this nomination. The last administration allowed for black and brown communities to be separated. The last mayor refused to name this city a sanctuary city. Naming things are not that important, actions are. And we believe that this appointment is going to do irreparable harm to all communities, immigrants...
Speaker, your time is up.
Hello, my name is Brandon LaVenture and like Mayor Karen Bass, I'm a social worker. Our profession is guided by a code of six ethical principles, which could just as well guide all public servants. I'd like to bring your attention to three of these principles. One, dignity and worth of the person. Appoint this man and you would send a clear message to all the vulnerable immigrants of this city. You don't matter. At a time when we most desperately need to stand together and affirm each other's dignity and worth, this action would do the opposite. Two, importance of human relationships. A third of us in L.A. County are immigrants and for the other two-thirds of us, immigrants are our neighbors, colleagues and classmates, friends and family. Sanctuary status preserves communities. It protects the relationships that make life worth living. Jim McDonald has proven his willingness to undermine that protection. Three, service, which brings us to the pressing question of this moment. Do you serve Angelenos or the fascists who want to deport Angelenos? I know the right answer, you should know the right answer. Now we ask you to make it clear through your actions whom you serve.
I strongly oppose the nomination of Sheriff Jim McDonald to LAPD chief. I call on city council to no longer allow to entangle, the entanglement of LAPD with ICE and to support and pass the sanctuary ordinance immediately. Sheriff McDonald has colluded with ICE, allowing them into his jails, terrorizing immigrant families and communities. Public safety means public trust. And from Sheriff McDonald's record, working with ICE, it is clear that the lack, he lacks the moral clarity to build that trust. Thank you for listening.
For absolute clarity, will you commit to refusing to collaborate with ICE?
Yeah, we will, we will not work with ICE on immigration enforcement issues at all. That's real clear throughout.
Mr. President, the council may now vote on the Public Safety Committee report relative to the appointment of James P. McDonald as the chief of police, Los Angeles Police Department.
All right, that item is now before us, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
The item is adopted.
Excellent, congratulations, Chief McDonald.
Thank you very much.[1791.83][1791.83][applause]